Good evening and welcome to the January 11, 2022 work session and a special meeting of the Gaston County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chad Brown and I serve as the Chairman of the Board as well as the Commissioner of the Riverbend Township. I would like to welcome everyone and thank Spectrum Cable and AT&amp;T for making this possible for our citizens, for our television audience and live stream audience. I would like to present our Gaston County Commissioners, beginning on my far right.
Alan Fraley, Cherrville Township.
Good evening, Ronnie Worley, South Point Township.
Tracy Philbeck, Dallas Township.
Bob Hovis, Crowder's Mountain Township.
And we have via Zoom tonight Commissioner Johnson. Commissioner Johnson, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
And Commissioner Keager has stepped out but was in attendance earlier. At this time, I'll ask you to please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Philbeck and the Pledge of Allegiance given by Mr. Bob Hovis.
If we could please take a moment of silence. We lost a dear person with the county, with EMS, Melanie Masked Gee. Gee. Well, we thank you for this day and we ask that you would give us wisdom as we go about the business of the people of Gaston County. And we ask that your will would be done. It's in Jesus Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever-forgiving justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the January 11 work session. First item on the agenda is Proclamations, Commendations, and Awards. Since Commissioner Keager has stepped down, I ask Commissioner Worley, as Commissioner Worley steps down to the podium, I wanted to recognize all the law enforcement officers in attendance and also across our land who protect us daily. As you well know, we've lost several members over the last few weeks of our law enforcement officers. And so if you guys will all keep those people in your thoughts and prayers, and also the families who have lost loved ones during this time.
With proclamation for to proclaim the month of February as Black History Month, I would ask Mayor Protim and Pastor Thomas Gillespie to come up and be with me. Hello, Pastor. Yeah, and I'm sorry, and Mrs. Really Fauz, is she here? I'm sorry, Ms. Fauz. Yeah, I wasn't reading down to the next line. I got excited about my brother Thomas coming up here. Good to have you all.
Whereas February is Black History Month and is recognized throughout the United States as an opportunity to celebrate the historical and present achievements and contributions made by African Americans to the economic and cultural and political development of our great country. The state of North Carolina and our local communities, whereas Black History Month's early origins began in February 1926 when Negro History Week was established by Dr. Carter G. Woodson, a Harvard scholar and a son of former slaves. Dr. Woodson launched an initiative to encourage the study of Black History and the African American experience in the United States. He chose February because it marked the birthdays of President Abraham Lincoln and the American abolitionist Frederick Douglass. Whereas Dr. Woodson's legacy influenced the eventual shift from Negro History Week to a month-long celebration later to be established in the mid-'70s and celebrated thereafter as Black History Month. Whereas the 2022 national theme for Black History Month is Black Health and Wellness. Whereas this year marks the 58th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act, which was first proposed by President John F. Kennedy in 1963 and eventually signed into law during the height of the American Civil Rights Movement on July 2, 1964 by President Johnson. The legislation prohibited discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, and national origin, and paved the way for future anti-discrimination legislation. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners, in commemoration of this nationwide celebration hereby proclaim February 2022 as Black History Month, in recognition of the many contributions of African Americans to Gaston County, North Carolina, and the nation at large, and the ongoing pursuit of equality, human rights for all citizens. And this will be adopted on the 25th day of January at our normal voting meeting. And I would invite Ms. Fauz and Pastor Gillespie to come forward and accept the proclamation and make remarks as you would. Thank you.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman and to the Commissioners, thank you for this proclamation recognizing Black History Month. Black History Month is a time for all Americans to remember our stories and teaching of those who helped us build this nation, who took a stance against prejudice, and to help build the lives of dignity and opportunity and the advancement and the cause of civil rights in this land, and to strengthen our families and the communities in America. I would like to take just a moment to recognize those who we stand on the shoulders of. We will not call their names, but we stand on the shoulders of great Afro-American people. But there are those who are still serving today in this municipality, in this county, and I would like to recognize them. Councilperson Kay McCatharine, Bessemer City, Dallas, North Carolina, Councilman Frank Milton, Gastonia Mayor Walker Reed, Councilperson Danielle Barber, Councilperson Charles Odom, and Lowell, Reverend Thomas Gillespie, and our county leader Dot Guthrie. Thank you all so much for recognizing African American Week known as Black History. And as I take my seat, there's a song that I like to sing because it takes the black and white keys to play "God Bless America." And I wrote a little song and I just sing one verse of it. I want, boy, Chairman Brown, with these words. It says, "America, you're that little child that says, 'Mom, we love you so.' Oh, America, you're my hometown. Long may you grow, long may you grow." Thank you so much. God bless America.
You come back and sing anytime.
Thank you, Chair.
Good evening, Chairman, Councilmen, and those in attendance this evening. It is an honor and privilege for me to stand here tonight and represent Dot Guthrie, who could not be here tonight with a prior engagement. Dot Guthrie is the Executive Director, Founder, Curator of the African American Museum of History and Culture at Lorre Mill. And we are proud to be a part of that. I am an executive member of the Board. And I think that Pastor Gillespie has summed it all up. So I will let what you heard sink in as far as Black History and what it's all about. And I hope that this is not the end, but the beginning of more to be shared as Black History, not just that month, but for every day. And hopefully, when the museum is open full, open again, that you will find it in your hearts to come and tour the museum because it represents Gaston County well. We represent all of the municipalities in Gaston County. No one is left behind. So do put that on your calendar. Just type contact dot or you'll go to our website and see the hours that you can come for tours. And we would love to have you. And if you can't do that, actually go to the website and keep up with us. We have a monthly newsletter that gives a lot of good information pertaining to Black History as well as to residents of Gaston County. So we invite you to do that as well. So in closing, let me say thank you for the proclamation that you have given to the African American Museum of History and Culture at Lorre Mill. On behalf of Dot Guthrie, I accept it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Fauz. We'll now call on Commissioner Worley as well to read the week of January 30, 2022 through February 5, 2022. It's Catholic School Week in Gaston County. Commissioner Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask Michelle Vollman from St. Michael's Catholic School to come forward.
Whereas Catholic School Week is January 30, 2022 to February 5, 2022, and is sponsored by the National Catholic Educational Association and the United States Conference of Catholic Bishops. Whereas St. Michael's Catholic School in Gastonia and Catholic schools throughout the United States have made valuable contributions to their communities. Whereas more than 2 million students attend Catholic schools in the United States and more than 85% of them go on to pursue a college degree, these students and their families should be commended for their strong dedication to their faith, for their steadfast commitment to furthering their studies. And whereas Catholic schools, educators, and administrators deserve thanks for their steadfast commitment, not just to educating minds, but to shaping hearts and cultivating the virtues in students that make our county and our local community stronger. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the week of January 30, 2022 to February 5, 2022 as Catholic School Week in Gaston County. And this also will be adopted on the 25th of January at our regular meeting. Michelle, if you'd like to make comments.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here today. It's an honor to be able to accept this proclamation on behalf of St. Michael. St. Michael Catholic School has been a part of the Gaston County community for nearly 80 years. In that time, we've partnered with many local and small businesses to provide hot lunches to our students. They've been uniform vendors for us and they've been places where we can gather to meet and celebrate. We also have supported our community by bringing pies to first responders over the Thanksgiving holidays. We do clothing and coat drives and also food drives as well, and clean up the streets of our community near our school. We are especially thankful for Gaston County and the funding they provided for our school in 2020 when COVID hit and they were able to give us funds to purchase personal protective equipment for both my staff and my students. So we are especially appreciative of that. During Catholic Schools Week, we do focus on celebrating not only our families and our students, our teachers, but our school as well and our community. So we, again, thank you for making this proclamation.
Thank you.
Chairman Brown has our next presentation.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. If Tara Joyner and her staff would please step up with me, please, from the Hope United Survivor Network. You get paid to get closer, ladies. Make sure you can be seen on TV. Whereas freedom, justice, and the pursuit of happiness in the foundation of American culture, we find it hard to fathom. We live in the world where people are deprived of these rights, a world where people are trafficked for labor or commercial sex. The heinous crime of human trafficking is not confined to some remote country. It is happening right here within all segments of our community. And whereas human trafficking and this organizational criminal activity in which human beings are treated as possessions to be controlled or exploited, human trafficking is a nationwide public health and civil rights crisis. And whereas Gaston County is the prime location for human trafficking because of its geographical location as a national international corridor. Whereas in 2020, there were 397 cases of human trafficking reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline in North Carolina, ranking North Carolina as the 11th state for the human trafficking within the country. And whereas victims of the human trafficking are frequently members of vulnerable populations such as domestic violence, sexual assault survivors, members of immigrant communities, minors in foster care, and homeless or runaway youth. And whereas the effect of human trafficking reach far beyond its victims and perpetrators, causing disruption in our schools, places of work, and neighborhoods. Whereas with leadership, dedication, encouragement, there is compelling evidence we can be successful in reducing human trafficking in our community through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding offenders accountable for their actions. Now therefore be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the month of January 2022 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. It encourages all Gaston County residents to learn more about the risks and indicators of human trafficking and to do their part in helping end the crisis. The reality of this evil enterprise can become overwhelming. However, if history taught us anything, in the fact of Gaston County will not be overcome in the face of adversity, together we can protect the vulnerable, help the victims of healing, and bring offenders to justice. This to be adopted on the 25th day of January 2022. Ms. Tara Joyner, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please accept this on our behalf of Gaston County as a proclamation, but it has an alarming ring. And we appreciate what you guys do and the things you've done for us so far. Please say a few words.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the Gaston County Commissioners for the opportunity to bring awareness to human trafficking here in our community. As you heard, North Carolina ranks 11th in the country for human trafficking. And Hope United Survivor Network is partnering with community providers to bring that coordinated response to the survivors in this area. We are excited to announce our upcoming collaboration with Public Health and Contegra so that we will be able to provide on-scene medical care for those impacted by this crime. Human trafficking is an issue that affects many, and we are incredibly grateful for the awareness that this proclamation brings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
As another side piece to that same issue, our law enforcement in Gaston County has stepped up above and beyond. So thank you to all law enforcement and Gaston County police for the things that they've done in helping that along with the municipalities. Ms. Heather Kaufman, please come up. This is to recognize the Lighthouse Child Advocacy Center on Reaccreditation. Whereas the Lighthouse Gaston County Child Advocacy Center has again received accreditation from the North Carolina Children's Alliance and the Board of Directors. Whereas National Children's Alliance, NCA, is a national association accreditation, accrediting body for the children's advocacy centers, the CACs. Formed in 1988, NCA has been providing Formed in 1988, NCA has been providing support, technical assistance, quality assurance for CACs, while serving as the voice for abused children for more than 25 years. And whereas, the Lighthouse Gaston County Child Advocacy Center first received accreditation in October 2016 from the National Children's Alliance Board of Directors. Following a rigorous review process, the Lighthouse was reaccredited on November 1, 2021, while again achieving the highest level of accreditation and successfully demonstrating adherence to each of the NCA's 10 standards accreditation. And whereas, the Lighthouse Gaston County Child Advocacy Center is a multi-disciplinary team of law enforcement, child protection, prosecution, mental health, medical, and victim advocacy professionals working together to investigate the abuse, help children heal from the abuse, and hold offenders accountable. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners extends its gratulations to the Lighthouse Gaston County Child Advocacy Center for achieving this impressive accreditation. Be it further resolved that the Gaston County Board of Commissioners recognize the Lighthouse Gaston County Child Advocacy Center for ensuring children and families of everyone in our community are providing efficient, relevant, and compassionate services, and extends its well wishes for the continued success in developing new programs to achieve these goals to be adopted on the 25th day of January 2022. I'll now ask Ms. Heather Kaufman to say a few words on what's happening. Thank you so much for this reaccreditation, the hard work you put in. But I also want to talk about what this board has done. We have taken some strides, along with the Board of Health, to make sure that we are putting together a house to be the Children's Advocacy Center. We've also partnered with other entities in the public sector along to make this happen. And that is happening as we speak. As you ride by, you'll be able to see these areas in transition. But one of the things we talk about is the hammer that we gave to everything that happens. We want to make sure that we keep this relative to what's going on in Gaston County. So each police officer or chief had received a hammer in what we had given out the very first day of the groundbreaking. So we wanted to make sure that we involve every municipality in what we're doing here at the county. Ms. Kaufman, please.
Thank you. Thank you for having us today, and thank you for the recognition for reaccreditation. Reaccreditation was a very rigorous process, as it is each five years. And we're very proud to have received that accreditation, as well as certainly want to recognize and thank all of our partners, all of the law enforcement jurisdictions in Gaston County, District Attorney's Office, mental health providers, child welfare staff, medical staff, mental health providers, and everybody that comes together to assist in this accreditation, because none of the work that we do to provide healing and hope to the child victims that we serve would be possible without them. And as Chairman Brown mentioned, the building process is coming along. We are extremely thankful to the Commissioners and to the entire community for all of the support that we have had. If you do drive by New Hope, it is in the framing process, and we're hoping a roof will go on next week. So we're very proud of the work that's being done and the continued success that we will have because of the partnerships that we've built in this community and all of the support they give us at the Lighthouse. So thank you.
Thank you. Certificates in appreciation of public service. It's a great pleasure for the Gaston County Board of Commissioners to honor citizens who have unselfishly given of their time, talents, and skills, as well as energies in service as an appointee to one of our various boards or commissions. This type of service is the foundation for citizen involvement in our county government, and is helping to shape the future of our community. We gratefully acknowledge the work of the following individuals, and a certificate of appreciation has been forwarded to them. Robert Brown for his service on the Economic Development Commission. Rebecca Jones on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Dean Harris, Amelia Leek, Chadwick Mitchell on the Sarah Local Planning Committee. Benjamin Bowles, Transportation Advisory Board. Heather Britton, Travel and Tourism Advisory Board. And Brian Hugh, the Workforce Development Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hovis. Our next item is citizens' recognition. A portion of the board's agenda is set aside for the purpose of allowing citizens an opportunity to offer comments or suggestions. This comment period is not intended to require the commission or staff to answer any questions or to provide a response. Questions requiring response shall be answered as soon as possible through the county manager's office. Citizens' recognition will be limited to one hour tonight. Comments will be limited to three minutes. As I call your name, please step to the podium. I will also call a second person as they can keep coming, and we'll try to make this expeditionally to get it done. As I call your name, please step up to the podium. The first sitting signs up is Ms. Leeann Pemberton. The second person will be Ms. Donna Elliott, and the third would be Libby Carpenter. While we await these to get to the podium, if you would please give the person who is speaking your undivided attention, as you would want that if you were in the room as well. Ms. Pemberton.
Hi. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and congratulations to everybody who received the recognition. I'm proud to be a citizen of Gaston County. I know that one of the items on the agenda today is to speak about the economic impact from Piedmont Lithium's side. I'd like to address the economic impact that will affect multiple citizens, such as myself. And I would like to urge the Board of Commissioners to represent what is best for this county and not agree to the pit mine. I'm really surprised, based on the population of Gaston County, which is approximately 228,000 people, that this locale is even a consideration. The area is simply too populated to put risk, to put at risk from the pollution of the pit mine. Also, this is a drought-prone area. There's simply not enough water to support their mining process without negatively impacting all of the wells in the area. In fact, according to the website, drought.gov, Gaston County is currently in a moderate drought, which is at, which as of at the end of this year, it is expected to persist through January and not expected to improve anytime soon. And historically speaking, since 2000, we've had five full years of moderate drought in the county, and 13 years included at least a few months of drought, most recently since December 2021. And in fact, in Charlotte, next door, there is a severe drought. So we may be facing water restrictions soon, and I'm not sure how we can get around that. And I just don't think there's enough water. So, of course, I agree with so many that it's not safe to our wells when the drilling goes below the water level, which I understand would be the case for us. Many of us are on the periphery, and we still face the negative outcomes of the pit mining, and we'll experience it every day. But we are not, but we are on our own, if this is allowed. So when I heard about the mining plans originally, I was heartsick, but thought, hey, make the best of a bad situation. So I reached out to Piedmont via email, asked what their plans were for drilling, blasting, what hours this will occur, will they operate 24/7? How will they put back into the community? Will they sponsor Little League teams, build parks? I asked if they would have a citizens' board and let them know that I would like to serve on that board so that we, as a community, are assured safety, updates, anything that impacts the neighbors. They never responded, and that was a clear message to me. I don't think they want community involvement or community to be informed. So now I ask you, as Commissioner, to not approve the pit mines. We are citizens who are not...
Ms. Pemberton, the three minutes is up, but thank you so much.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Before you speak, Ms. Elliott, if we could just hold our applause, either for or against, I just want to make sure everyone has the same type of gesture. But thank you. Ms. Elliott?
Hi, thank you. Hi, I'm Donna Elliott. I'm the Executive Director of Health Net Gaston. We're the lead agency for the Gaston, Lincoln, Cleveland Continuum of Care, a consortium of agencies in all three counties working to prevent and end homelessness. I'm here to thank all of you, and most especially Commissioner Philbeck, for the work you've been doing around the issue of homelessness in our county. We're very supportive of the task force recommendation to commit funds and further study on the issue, and look forward to working with your committee as we move forward to make sure everyone in Gaston County can have a safe place to live. Thank you again.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, I will call Ms. Libby Carpenter, but after that, Dan Setser and Eric Carpenter will be the next. Ms. Carpenter?
Chairman Brown and the county commissioners. Excuse me. I'm Libby Carpenter, as you know. A retired teacher and a resident of Atterholt Road. I'm concerned about what you will not hear about tonight during Piedmont Lithium's paid consultant's presentation. As residents of northwestern Gaston County, we have repeatedly warned against drastically expanding mining in the name of green energy. Doing so risks trampling on the rights of Gaston County land and business owners. Plus, it destroys ecosystems that play a vital role in regulating the global climate. Our farm has been in our family since the 1750s. Our grandson Will plans to continue the legacy of farming and agribusiness on this land. He's currently at North Carolina State University pursuing a master's in land management. But Piedmont Lithium has other plans. Plans to lower the aquifer so our two wells will dry up. There will be no way to irrigate his crops, and our home and land will become a wasteland. No amount of municipal water at taxpayers' expense will be enough for farming. Gaston County has a legacy, too, a thriving agriculture industry. Thousands depend on our dairy and agricultural products across the state and region. And the unanswered question is how many of these farms and small business jobs will be displaced by the mine? Piedmont Lithium proposes to create 500 jobs, but that's just roughly one job for every six acres of the mining property. Piedmont Lithium told investors that these jobs would go to out-of-work West Virginia coal miners, not Gaston County citizens. And according to the most recent USDA Agriculture Census, and I have a copy of that to be presented in the minutes, Gaston County is home to 522 farms. Gaston County produces 97,000 bushels of soybeans used in numerous food products. We are home to 6,900 cows, used for dairy and beef production. We produce 3.5 million broilers, and we have 20,000 laying hens, filling our grocery stores with eggs. We all have to eat, but not all have to drive an electric car. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter.
And I want to give these...
Motion to accept. Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, all in favor? Is you now, Ms. Madam Clerk? Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Dan Setser, please.
Good evening. I'm Dan Setser. I live on Long Shoals Road in Gaston County, and I want to speak about my concern for this Piedmont Lithium Mine project. So it is a very large project, but my concern is there's a big chance for something to go wrong environmentally, a problem to come up, mostly with the waters, pretty high on my list. And that this mine is going to be relatively short-term. It's going to be played out 20 years or so. So I wanted to contrast that with what we do have going on economically here. And Gaston County has leased over 1.7 million square feet of industrial buildings in 2021. Nearly all the buildings completed in 2021 are pre-leased, and there are another four, over 4 million square feet under construction in 2022. Mr. Donnie Hicks and his team at the Gaston County Economic Development Office have never been busier and are having no trouble recruiting new investment, industry, and good, high-paying, clean jobs to our county. So you can look at Apple Creek, just located off Highway 279. That's a brand-new 300-acre business park attracting international users to Gaston County. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Setser. As Mr. Eric Carpenter comes up, the next one will be Ms. Cindy Bostic, and then the last one will be, I'll say that's Tia Willis. Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Eric Carpenter. My family owns property at the intersection of Atterholt Road and Brutusel Road. We would be directly across the Atterholt Road from the proposed east pit for Piedmont Lithium. And tonight, you're going to hear Piedmont Lithium's paid consultant present their, you know, economic impact study. What you won't hear is the calls to the residents of Gaston County, and particularly the nearby residents, as our property will no longer have access likely to well water, or it could be exposed to contamination in the form of dust or water contamination. And, you know, I would just ask yourselves, as you listen to this presentation, does Piedmont Lithium have the financial capacity to make the residents of Gaston County whole if something goes wrong? I don't think they do. I don't think they've approached most of the residents here. They've been aggressive in trying to acquire property, saying, if you don't sell, we will mine around you. So they will basically steal our right to enjoy our property as we see fit, and that's what they're looking for. But I would just ask, please consider the unseen cost to the residents of Gaston County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cindy Bostic?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to step forward and speak. I'm not quite as well-versed in speaking as some of the other folks are. My husband and I moved back here in 2015. I grew up in Gaston County, born in Kings Mountain, went to North Gaston, left in 1979. Moved back in 2015 to this community, because what a great community it is. Our needs were special, as far as properties went. We happened to find a great little property at 2212 Mooney Road. Some of you folks may know it as the old poker house. We feel like it's a bit of a historic property because secretly, everyone seems to know about this place. And I'm seeing a couple of chuckles there. We love our house. We love our three acres. We are surrounded by pastures, woods, fields, great neighbors. It's quiet, just off of 279. It's a perfect house for our aging parents. My parents live with us. They're in their 80s. Perfect house for my husband and myself to grow old in. It's all one level. We don't have steps. The doorways are wide, because after all, it was a poker house. And it's a perfect property for us moving back into this area. I have several concerns. We always have wildlife passing behind our house, 29 turkeys last week. We always have deer passing by our house. I have chickens. Chickens don't do too good when you start blasting every day. I am concerned about the damage to the well. I'm concerned about the damage to my home from the blasting. I asked the question at the meeting that was had at the church over on Hesbeth Road, of how far away do you have to be from the blasting according to state, county, federal regulations? I never got an answer from anyone. It was not answered. So those are some of our concerns. Concerned about air quality. We are on a well, and that's our source of water. Like I said, we have great numbers, and I hope that y'all will make good decisions. Our area is not one that would utilize electric cars to a great extent. Most of us understand that they are not a very practical vehicle altogether for what it needs to make them go. But I hope that you will listen to us, the citizens that live in the area, and I bid you a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Bostic. Ms. Willis?
Good evening. My name is Tina Willis, and I am here to speak about the homeless task force that we were able to be a part of. I am with partners. I'm the housing manager there. And also, I'm here representing the Gaston, Lincoln, Cleveland Continuum of Care. I'm the vice chair. I do want to say a special thank you to Commissioner Philback, Dr. Eagle, and Mr. Williams for your efforts with the homeless task force and the work that you put into that. So thank you very much for that leadership. Six of our Continuum of Care members and many community partners had the pleasure of being able to participate in the Gaston County Homeless Task Force. of being able to participate in the Gaston County Homeless Task Force. The Continuum of Care would like to thank you for seeing the needs of those experiencing homelessness and creating this task force and being willing to listen to the recommendations of this group and move forward to hopefully create some positive solutions for Gaston County citizens. The Continuum of Care is especially appreciative of being asked to be part of this task force and being part of the efforts to come up with the recommendations that are being brought tonight. The recommendations are a result of strong collaborative efforts, research, discussions, and realizations, and we feel that they accurately reflect the needs of the community. The Continuum of Care fully supports the recommendations, and we're excited to see them put into action. This is just the beginning of what is possible and what we can do to work together and create. We'd also like to extend an invitation for anyone to be a part of our Continuum of Care. We're a strong group with lots of resources, expertise, and knowledge in regards to homelessness and housing issues. We also want to remind you, or let some of you know who don't know, that we have a homeless point-in-time count coming up on January the 26th. This is a federal effort happening across the country to survey those experiencing homelessness, to see how many people are experiencing homelessness, and try to understand the needs as well as gaps and barriers that they face. If you're interested in being a part of the Continuum of Care or the point-in-time count, please reach out to any of us. There are several Continuum of Care members here tonight, and we hope that you will be in support of these recommendations and our point-in-time count and the Continuum of Care as we move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Our next item is presentations. Our first presentation this evening is going to be the Intergovernmental and Interagency Task Force of Homelessness Report. I will now turn it over to Dr. Kim Eagle and Mr. John Bennett, Task Force facilitator, to forego the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to Dr. Bennett for being here to help us walk through the recommendations. Before we step into the presentation formally, we have a video that we would like to share that sums up the work of the task force and lets you hear directly from some of those members. You've heard from a few already tonight, but before we get into the details, I would ask the booths to go ahead and run the video for you all.
It's an issue seen all over the globe, and Gaston County is no different. But for the past eight months, leaders from all sectors of the county have come together with the goal of reducing the number of people experiencing homelessness in our area. Spearheaded by Dallas Township Commissioner Tracy Philbeck, the task force included representatives from county government, local municipalities, nonprofits, and other agencies who have a hand in working on this issue.
This was an awesome opportunity to have a lot of collaborators at the table to really problem-solve.
This is probably the most diverse and most purposeful group that I've ever worked with. The individuals that were on this task force were just incredible with their knowledge and their compassion and their ideas. Everybody came here, and we put our egos aside, and we came up with solutions that we thought would be the best for Gaston County, and it was really impressive to see.
Out of a list of dozens of ideas, the task force narrowed its focus to three main recommendations. First, a quarter of a million dollars to immediately help with housing needs this winter.
Where can we target something that is of immediate impact and immediate need and be able to do that in, you know, just only, you know, if not months, just only a couple weeks' time, to have that immediate action?
Those funds would potentially come from federal American Rescue Plan Act dollars, not from local funds. Second, setting up a smaller standing committee to continue the work of the Homelessness Task Force.
As a representative of Gaston, Lincoln, and Cleveland Counties, I'm actually very impressed that we've taken the opportunity to really be the lead in the area, to bring together professionals like we see here that are really passionate about this being a community that we want to live and grow in going forward.
And finally, working with the private sector to establish a housing trust fund. This could provide longer-term transitional housing options to better serve those struggling to get back on their feet financially.
This really gives everybody a little bit more of a level playing field, and that has me super excited. I think that all of our community matters, whether you're making a six-figure income or whether your income is only, you know, a few thousand dollars a year. You matter, and if you're given the right opportunities, that income can grow.
These recommendations are delivered to the Board of Commissioners for consideration, but the work of those involved in the task force is far from over.
Sometimes I just go and I meet people on the street that are homeless, and they just want to talk. They're not gonna, you know, they're not here to hurt you. They just want to talk. They just want somebody to listen to them. And I think people have the wrong impression.
So I'll ask the booth to pull up the presentation, and we'll step into the materials that you have there in front of you. You may remember that as a board, you all approved a resolution back in February of '21 to charge this task force with a very specific charge, and I am very pleased to say that we've completed that charge. The report that you have in front of you tonight addresses what you asked for, and the comment was made earlier that this is just the beginning. That is a true statement, but we have accomplished a tremendous amount of work since last February, and much of my job is meaningful and purposeful, but this is truly inspired work. Seeing this group of folks come together to tackle such an important issue was a phenomenal process to observe, and I cannot thank the task force members enough for the effort that they put forward and the care and compassion and determination that they showed. Moving on into the information, we have completed the charge, and we identified the extent of homelessness in our county. We defined the challenges that face this population. We have documented that in the report that you have in front of you, and that assessment of the current status is complete. We've also included some best-practice information. A tremendous amount of research was conducted as a part of this process. We have a lot of data that we have analyzed and more data to be analyzed, and then some very specific recommendations for immediate action. Your charge directed us to come out of this process with some action steps that we could take immediately. We have that for you, but in addition to that, we also have milestones identified and a path forward that we'll talk more about in a few minutes to continue this work. I've listed here for you the task force members. I will not go through these by name, but you can see, and as you already know, it was a very diverse membership, broad membership with subject matter experts. We invited all municipalities to participate, most did. We had representation from our public safety folks, from the faith community, and also from nonprofits, so a very robust participation. John, Dr. Bennett is going to cover the process for us. He served as facilitator through the process, and then he'll turn it back over to me.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Eagle. So this group met diligently from May through December and had a total of eight meetings. And during that time, each of those meetings focused on very specific steps in the process that ranged from just getting to know what they know and didn't know, what they knew and didn't know about homelessness in Gaston County, and from there, being able to gather some information within that group and from outside resources. Included in that were 10 subject matter experts that spoke about their own experiences with homelessness, with others who brought perspectives of service providers, others who brought in census data, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and building developers as well. We also had experiences with citizens who came in and spoke to the group. We had three opportunities for citizen participation in this process. Early in our process, the task force participated in a virtual simulation, a poverty simulation in essence, so that we had some common understanding of what the issues were and the challenges that were faced by those that were the focus of this work. This group, again, developed recommendations based on the findings and prioritized those. Each of those recommendations is also set in your document and in the infographic that I think you have as well, that outlines for you the key areas related to housing, personal needs that the individuals have in the community, education, training, and employment assistance, health care issues, recommendations related to coordination across agencies and organizations, and finally, ongoing data collection and evaluation recommendations.
So I will share with you some more detailed information about the immediate items for action related to some very immediate needs. Several weeks ago, the board had a conversation around outlining what we, as a county, would use our American Rescue Plan funds for, and we, you, agreed to set aside for potential use related to homelessness a million dollars. Well, the first recommendation provides short-term emergency housing assistance. We're recommending $250,000 from the 1 million that we earmarked, if you will, to face some very immediate needs for these coming winter months related to housing. That is the first recommendation. On a representative night and earlier, Tina mentioned the point-in-time count. So from 2020, for that point-in-time count, 24 individuals slept outside because there were no beds left and emergency shelters, and we're coming up on that count yet again. So this action puts the board in a position to make an immediate impact, especially during these upcoming colder months. The second recommendation is to task, your county manager, to task me with establishing a committee, a smaller committee than the task force, but something that could be operational, ongoing. There is a tremendous amount of research and data to be analyzed and implementation to occur. We have these short-term recommendations for you. There are 67 additional recommendations in the report that need further work, further study, and work toward implementation. This committee can do that work. That is the second item. The third immediate need or action is related to the establishment of a public-private partnership to look toward affordable housing. Affordable housing, when I use that term, I'm speaking to workforce housing, that percentage of the population that is earning between 30 and 80% of area median income. Looking at other models across the nation and having had some very preliminary conversations with our foundation, there is opportunity for dialogue and interest in dialogue around how we, as a community, may set up some kind of trust fund or other mechanism, depending on how our conversations evolve, to work toward affordable housing as a community. So pursuing that dialogue is the third recommendation. So as we move out of the work session and later tonight in your special meeting, you consider these recommendations. What I've listed here is the specific actions that we're requesting of you. The first is very simply to accept the report that meets the charge that you gave to the task force, and then the remaining three are the establishment of a committee, pursuing that dialogue around the partnership, and then lastly, allocating $250,000 of your ARPA funds toward the immediate needs. And I will close by saying, this piece of paper here really does a nice job, I believe, of summing up the work. We now have a framework. We have all of the subject matter experts, all of the nonprofits, everyone, including the municipalities, at the table talking about the challenges, which is the context for addressing this issue, and we have a structure for moving toward action steps, which is something to be celebrated. And with that, I'll stop for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Eagle. Thank you, Dr. Bennett. Are there any questions from the board at this time? Mr. Philbeck?
I just wanted to take a moment to thank Dr. Eagle, Dr. Bennett, David Williams, everyone that took the time to be on the homeless task force. A lot of times, I guess, because I'm the chairman in position, I get a lot of, hey, thank you, good job, when in reality, I didn't really do anything. I just listened. The task force itself did the work, and it's really good work, and it's work that I believe can better our community. Homelessness, once you dig into it and actually see it for what it is, there was just a lot I didn't know. And homelessness can mean, I think our first meeting was, what is homelessness? And, you know, my first is, well, someone that's not living in a home. But there's a lot more to that. I think you would be surprised at the number of children that we have in our community that are homeless. They're at someone's house, but they really don't have a mom and dad, and they're just there, very transient, I guess you would say. A lot of need in their community. So I'm thankful for this board. I do want to give recognition, at the time, Chairman Tom Keeger, when we brought this, he was very supportive of allowing this committee to be put together. I just can't say enough, it's good work that will outlive, I think, us on this commission and with the committee that is continuing working on this issue, I believe will make a positive impact. COVID has not been kind. Inflation's high. I do think we're, I don't know how the economy's going to go, but this is going to be an issue that's going to be with us for a long time, and we're either going to help solve the problem or it's going to end up just really being a very disaster for our community. So I just, I can't thank you enough, those that were on the committee that spent a lot of time and energy. I'm personally very thankful. Thank you, Mr. Bennett, Dr. Eagle, very much, and the board. Of course, Ms. Rogers was there as well. Very thankful, and this is good, good work. And probably in my 12 years on the commission, this would rank probably in the top three of things I'm proud to be a part of. So I just wanted to say that and thank those that put in the time, energy, and effort, and I think that's where the recognition really needs to be. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else on the board of commissioners? Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would just like to offer my appreciation also to the task force. I think, as Commissioner Philbeck said, this is a disease in our community, and it's certainly something that needs to be addressed, and we need to find the remedy and the help for these folks. Ran into folks just tonight, in fact, that were homeless, just here at the QT station beside the police department. But the bigger question that I have, though, other than the appreciation that I do appreciate, what metrics will we use to measure whether we are successful or whether we're failing as we go, and what timeline will we use, and how will that be reported back to the board? We'd like to know that.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Worley. We have started to identify preliminarily some of the metrics that will make sense in the long term relative to the impact on homelessness, and that will be one of the very first charges to this new committee. In anticipation of your vote later tonight, I've started thinking through the authority and the operation and the composition of that committee. I think that's going to be critically important. It will take members of the task force and be smaller in number, but really start to work on the question that you just asked. And my goal in terms of the first milestone would be to have that up and running later than February the 1st, and then establish some kind of regular reporting structure and mechanism back to this board. But beyond that, this is not just a Gaston County conversation. I've already had some dialogue with the City of Gastonia and other municipalities that have already been at the table relative to how they are going to be and need to be a part of this effort as well. So asking for a bit of grace as we determine... So asking for a bit of grace as we determine what that looks like with input from the task force.
Anyone else? Mr. Hovis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The task force chairman, Mr. Philbeck, was 100% correct. Homelessness is not a single definition. Homelessness is a myriad of conditions that residents in our county find themselves in, some by choice, some by choice at their own detriment, because they don't understand that they're putting themselves in jeopardy. And that's probably one of the harder facets of dealing with individuals who decide to take up residence on a property that used to be theirs and defy anybody to tell them they can't live there. And that is one of those hard challenges that this group will be faced in trying to identify. We have mechanisms in Gaston County through our Department of Health and Human Services that tries to help address people in those type of conditions. But they have to be willing to accept it. And that's one of the challenges. So as we go through this and move forward, and it's definitely something that we need to address, there's not a single answer, but I think there's a myriad of programs that we will try to put together and identify to address these varied needs. And I don't think there's a single solution, but there are needs that we as government, we as caring individuals can identify and put a framework together to address those needs as best possible. We don't have Cinderella, and we don't have a magic wand from Harry Potter to make it all go away, but we certainly can put some safety net in place to help those who really are looking to be reached out to and addressed and help to do that. But I appreciate all the work, a lot of work's gone on to it, a lot more to come. But Gaston County is trying to address something that is here, and it's real and it's tangible. And this committee has shown a great deal of passion and compassion to individuals impacted by the myriad of causes of this. And I'm very appreciative of their work. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Philbeck.
To Commissioner Worley's question about, I guess, how can we see improvement? How do we measure it? I think we could look at some of the data in this report and look at some of the steps that we're going to take, and then maybe revisit that same data. And I think that's really going to give us a telling sign. With that said, understanding that this problem is a lot bigger than a number on a piece of paper. But I do think there's a way to track that to some degree. And I think having this data that the group put together now and comparing that with the new committee going forward should show some improvement. And I'm assuming that would be the goal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I wanted to add, I saw something that just, and these are just me thinking outside because I wasn't on the committee. I know we had representatives from the county police and one from the Malhaw Police Department. I think the homelessness probably affects our police officers more than any other sector that we have as far as integration between the two. I think that's where we need to start on a joint venture between each municipality, as the managers have already tried to buy in, as we work with police. Obviously, these people are struggling already. We've got to figure out ways to help them in that environment. So I'd like to see that as part of things going forward. I also want to thank the committee, Commissioner Philbeck, and everybody for their hard work and the diligent time it took over eight months to put into something like this. I think at the end of the day, Mr. Hovis explained it as, when you try to give help, someone also has to receive it. So we need to maybe work on buying the community from the faith-based organizations, not that they haven't been. We also need to look at our economic development segment to see, because not only does this affect the individual who's homeless, it also affects businesses. It affects different ways that we do things in life. So I think the buy-in, and I'm very proud to say this was a great thing that's went on for eight months, but we need to make sure that we also incur a lot more of the community. And I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying we need to have buy-in. We have a lot of great economic development partners in Gaston County who I'm sure would love to see individuals not sleeping on their sidewalk or using their, you know, I mean, just individual things. But I'm just saying, I think at the end of the day, I think this is something that we could really get a hold of, and I'd like to inquire about seeing some of those things that you, but thank you, and thank you, Mr. Bennett, for your work on that.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, your focus on outcomes, I think is an extremely important point. I've heard that from several of you tonight, related to the data and how we track that, and it really does need to become all about the outcomes. And if I could, I would like to do a public thank you to two staff members in particular that were really instrumental in making this work happen. David Williams has already been mentioned. He played a tremendous role, as did Elizabeth Harry out of our budget office. So I wanted to thank them publicly for their efforts. Thank you.
Our next presentation will be by Piedmont Lithium Economic Impact Study. Dr. John Conotan, Professor of Financial Economics at University of North Carolina Charlotte. You have the floor, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, and good evening. I'm not exactly sure how to do this. I could use some technological help here. I'm a math guy.
Matt, if you don't mind asking someone from the back to come over, please?
So, see if I get my slides up here. That's going the wrong way. Let's see.
Coming up behind you, sir.
You're welcome. Spacebar and arrow keys.
Perfect. Thank you very much, and thank you for the opportunity to present the work that I did for Piedmont Lithium. And we're going to look at the economic impact of Piedmont Lithium tonight. And that's me. And I think most everyone here knows exactly where it's going to take place, but it's in northwest Gaston County. And this is just sort of a map of where the different components of it will be. This is the projected employment that was provided by Piedmont Lithium. So this is what we in the business call direct employment and direct output. And let me explain a little bit about that off the top right now. What we're measuring here is the dollar value of the product that is being produced by the mine. And in this particular instance, you can see it by year, starting in 2022, and really nothing is taking place, and the startup actually occurs in late '23. Then for the next four years, you can see the output of all of the different components, the quarry, the concentrator, and the refinery. And then the last column, we provide the employment information, and it's 428 on an ongoing basis every single year of direct employment, direct employment, that's onsite at the quarry, at the concentrator, and at the refinering capacity or the refining operation. And this is the employment breakdown per year, quarry, concentrator, and the chemical plant or the refinery reaching the total. So that's just the employment numbers, and those are by function, direct onsite. And then we have the compensation, and this is, of course, something that's very important. Bottom line in this is the average wage is about $82,000. It could be higher than that, but at this point in time, in 2022, it is $82,000. The Gaston County average compensation, which includes all benefits, is about $61,000. So this is paying about 25% more, 30% more than the average wage for Gaston County in 2021, okay? So this is in 2022. In fact, in all of this presentation, everything is not inflated for the year, because I heard it earlier, someone talking about, we don't know what inflation's going to be going forward, and that's true. We don't know what it's going to be. So all of this has been done in constant $20,000, not taking into account any inflationary issues that will happen in the economy over the next five years. This is to, these next couple of slides are to kind of give you the global perspective of what's going on here. And this is U.S. annual electric vehicle sales and their forecast through 2030. And you can see right now, we're selling less than a million electric vehicles, and they represent less than a 5% share of total U.S. product. By 2030, we see that number coming to about 4.7 billion, or roughly almost 30% of total electric vehicle sales and new car sales, new cars and light truck sales. So that's a pretty significant portion of the vehicles that will be sold coming forward by the end of this decade, okay? And that is, this little side here is kind of interesting. This is the EV mandates by governments around the world. And what we see is that by 2030, we really see a lot of companies pushing to 100% electric vehicle sales. We're not there yet, we're not even close to it. But internationally, as you can see, the countries that are 2030, the countries that are 2035 and 2040, and as you can see, a lot of countries and a lot of vehicle sales are going to be full electric plug-in vehicles within the next decade to decade and a half. This is one thing that is not in the report that I produced, but I think is important for folks to understand going forward. And this is because the report was done last year, but this was done last week. The EPA increased the CAFE standards for U.S. automakers. Now, CAFE standard stands for Corporate Average Fuel Economy, has been with us since the '70s. As recently as a few years ago, the Corporate Average Fuel Economy sales weighted was 27.5 miles to the gallon. Under the Obama administration, it was raised to the mid-30s. What we see here is the Biden administration has raised that Corporate Average Fuel Economy standard to over 50 gallons, 55 miles per gallon. Now, y'all are in here, y'all have cars, y'all understand that it's pretty hard for us to get to 33 miles per gallon. A lot of things were done to cars. I could go through a list of little technology items that had to be done to cars to reach that. The next 25 miles per gallon increase in the next six or seven years is only going to be achieved one way, and that is the percentage of vehicles that are sold by car manufacturers are going to have to be electric vehicles in order for them to reach that goal, that standard. And that standard is in place, it's not going to change, and car companies are having to plan to meet that going forward. All right. This is, one of the problems that all countries are going to face going forward is that the requirement for electric vehicles, the technology right now is the lithium cobalt battery. Lithium's a critical component in that. We do not mine really any lithium in this country. There's a little bit of operation in Nevada, but for the most part, it just doesn't exist. This provides you with some understanding of where the lithium comes from now, the percent of the total lithium that's consumed in the world. By the way, about 67% of this lithium is in automobiles, the others in consumer electronics. The problem is going forward, whoops, let me go back one. The problem is going forward, the known reserves issue is really kind of a constraint as we ramp up vehicle sales. Right now, we're just touching the beginning, if you will. It's just in the early stages, 3%, 4%, 5% of sales are electric vehicles, even less in terms of the percentage of the existing fleet. But over the next 10 or 20 and 30 years, that's going to change dramatically, not because we want it necessarily, but simply because that's what's going to go forward based on government mandates that we don't have anything to do with. We've already seen it in a lot of countries that have required electric vehicles to be 100% of new sales, and we've also seen it in this country just recently, last week, with the change in the CAFE standard, which will, it doesn't require you to make electric vehicles, but there's virtually no other way around it other than to have a significant portion of the sales be electric vehicles. Now, on to the economic impact. For this study, we use a standard methodology that is the goal standard, if you will, for doing economic impact studies. We use M-Plan methodology. It stands for Impact and Planning Analysis. It is the standard that the U.S. government uses and requires of all economic impact studies, and this is what we applied here. There are three components that we need to define that will help us understand what's going on in the numbers. First is the direct, and that's the first round activity that takes place onsite. So earlier, I presented the expected output levels and the expected employment levels that will take on, that will take place onsite in the mining activity. So that's the onsite, that's the direct. The indirect is a supplier chain activity. In order for that mine to operate, in order for that concentrator to operate, in order for the refining capacity to operate, they require inputs that they buy from other suppliers. And in this study, the indirect or the supplier chain activity is only that activity that comes from within Gaston County. So this is just within Gaston County. This doesn't look at what they're buying outside. This is only what they're buying inside of Gaston County. Finally is the induced impact, and that is additional economic activity that takes place in Gaston County that is unrelated to the actual mining operation and the supplier chain operation. So this is because folks that work at the mine and folks that work for the supplier chain, the new employment in those two sectors, if you will, have additional income that they spend throughout the community on a wide range of products. You'll find that some of the bigger beneficiaries of that are real estate, hospitality and leisure industry, the food and entertainment, that kind of thing. So those are really the ones that benefit greatly from the additional employment that takes place onsite and in the supplier chain. All right, so this is the first one, and this gives us the direct effects. We've already seen the, I don't have my fancy pointer I have in class. We've already seen the direct effects, that's the first column. That's the output of the entire operation on the mining site. And then the second is the indirect effects. That's what the mine will have to buy from local suppliers in order to operate. And the third column is the induced effects, and that is what will have to be, that is what, kind of the spin-off that occurs because these new industries and new economic activity in the supplier chain exist in Gaston County. All told, by 2026, 2027, we're looking at 700 to 750 million additional dollars of output within the county. On the employment side, the 428, the first column, and 428 employees from 2024 on through 2027, again, is the direct onsite employment at the mining operation. The indirect, you can see that we get another 306 jobs when this thing is up and going in the supplier chain industry within Gaston County to service that operation of the mining activity, and then 317 additional jobs that are spread out throughout the entire economy of Gaston County because the direct effects, the employees of the mining operation and the employees of the, the new employees of the supplier chain operation, all now have incomes and they spend them throughout the entire community. Bottom line is that on an ongoing annual basis, this project will generate an additional 1,051 jobs yearly. This is the employee compensation. Bottom line here is, it's $51 million of additional employee compensation in Gaston County through the direct, the indirect, and the induced components here. This gives you kind of a sense as to, all right, who winds up benefiting from this? This is a list of the supplier chain industries that are directly affected. So when that's just talking, you know, over here, we're talking, excuse me, over here, we're talking general, I'm going to go back one more. We're talking generalities in the indirect column here, $107 million, $99 million in the last couple of years. Here, we're actually identifying the industries that are directly going to benefit as the supplier chain, electric power, electric power generation, maintenance and repair, construction, wholesale trade, waste management and remediation services, insurance agencies, commercial and industrial machinery, natural gas, et cetera. You can see the industries and the impact that they have, or the impact that they are receiving as a result of, and these are industries in Gaston County, as a result of the operation of this mine over the next several years. And these are the additional jobs. The indirect jobs is the first column over here on the right side of the presentation or the PowerPoint slide, and you can see the jobs, the 306 direct jobs, and you can, indirect jobs, I should say, and you can see the impact that they all, the industries and how many additional jobs are in each of these supplier chain industries as a result of the operation of the mine. And then finally, there is a one-time only, and this is not ongoing year in, year out, but there's a one-time only impact of the construction activity as this gears up. So there is a mining activity, but there is also physical construction for the concentrating operation. for the concentrating operation and also for the refining operation. And that one-time only impact that takes place over the next six years is roughly $1.2 billion. After 2027, that's gone, but cumulative over that six-year period is $1.2 billion and it, as a result of the construction activity to get this mine up and going. Construction employment, you can see this by year. It, obviously, it's very early on as the big operation. And you can see that these are the next six years and the construction employment in total that will take place as a result of building up the facilities and getting them up and going. But these are, again, these are just one time, all right? So the total output over the next six years, when you combine the ongoing operations, which will continue on for at least the next 20 years, and the one-time annual impacts of the construction activity over the next six years. And you can see here that we're looking, by 2025, 2026, et cetera, we're looking at 750 to 800 million dollars of annual economic impact that will take place in this county and within the next decade. And here are the jobs. And you can see that, again, we're a little over 1,000 jobs in the, most of the next six years, certainly the years 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6 of this process. All right, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. These are the conclusions, however. These are in the, the report. But again, these are just, again, what I've already talked about in terms of the slides. Bottom line is that the cumulative construction and ongoing impact, excuse me, the construction is about $1.2 billion. And we're talking about over 1,000 jobs in total for the county on an annual ongoing basis over the next 20 years. Thank you very much for your time. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. I'll now open up questions to the board. Mr. Fraley.
Thank you for being here. When assessing these economic impacts of the project, did you include any negative economic impacts that could occur as a result of the mining operations such as loss of property values near the mine site, disruption to groundwater, blasting impacts to nearby businesses, and loss of developmental potential near the mine operations due to real or perceived negative impacts of Piedmont Lithium's operations?
No, I did not.
And why was that?
Because these, these economic impact studies are narrowly focused on the economic impact and not costs associated with working outside of regulations and environmental concerns. Those would be, seriously, those would be a different type of report that would take place with different expertise than what I have.
Right, I think that would be, these folks would need to hire somebody like you to.
Not like me. I, I got a very narrow lane that I operate in.
Okay. Well, anyway, some of these numbers to me seem pretty, you know, inflated. I think it's a best-case scenario in a lot of situations, or it certainly appears to be. And I don't know if you took into consideration if the political winds were to change back where they were several years ago and maybe the pipelines get opened back up and maybe there's not going to be such a demand. I also understand there's companies that are working on other type of materials to produce batteries with. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
I am, sir, yeah.
And what would happen if that were to come to pass and maybe the demand for lithium wasn't as strong as it is today?
I think those are legitimate questions. I would caution in terms of the technology. The technology timeframe on all of this is quite far along. We've had lithium battery technology for a number of years that's been developed fairly well to provide us with vehicles that produce reliably 250 to 350-mile range. The next step in battery production is not proven yet in terms of different chemical makeup. And so it's kind of, maybe, maybe not. There's also hydrogen cell cars that produce electricity. That, those, that technology has been around for about 30 years, but there hasn't been that breakthrough yet that makes it practical for personal transport. So right now, for the foreseeable future, and when I say foreseeable, I'm thinking at least a decade. And as you can see, most of the mandates are within the next decade. For the foreseeable future, we're looking at lithium technology to produce electric vehicles. Whether we like it or not, the mandates and the requirements are there that are going to dictate that we do this.
Well, you know, that, that maybe, maybe not is a little concerning because 10 years down the road, when we got a 600-foot hole in the ground and things do come to pass, then what happens? What are we left with? What's the impact going to be to these people that are sitting out here and their property? And where's everybody going to be that, when that day comes, if it comes to pass? And nobody can really answer that.
I agree.
Thank you, sir. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fraley.
Mr. Hovis.
Certainly. Thank you, sir, for this information. In your charts and graphs, I don't see anywhere here that talks about the number of batteries or the, the number of, the tonnage of lithium produced would equal X number of batteries during this timeline. And we talk about this huge mandate that we've got to be at this astronomical number. Is this 100 batteries a year, or is it 1,000 batteries a year?
When we look at the chart that has the production of lithium, the average electric vehicle has about 22 pounds of lithium in its battery component, so you can just do the math there. It's not too, not too hard.
I think I can do that.
I think that's in the report, it wasn't in the slides.
And that 22, that 22 pounds per battery equates to $22,000 for a new lithium battery that was exploded by a gentleman who purchased a Tesla and wasn't going to buy a battery?
Yeah, well, yeah, I, that's not my, it's not my lane.
Okay, no, no, but I'm just, those are facts, stated facts as well.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Worley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Condon, I'm not sure that you can answer this. Maybe someone else can, but I would guess they're here tonight. But most of the projects that you show or that you talk about in the charts show a start in 2023 with quarry construction and then follow with the concentrator and the chemical plant in 2024. However, our estimates and other information we've been given that the infrastructure construction, such as water, sewer, and electrical, have been estimated to be three-year projects. So that would push us out to beyond '24, probably '25. So if, if the plant could not even be in operation until perhaps 2025, would that change these numbers?
Okay, and the answer, that's a great question because I've heard that comment as well from, recently from the Piedmont people. That's a great question. And that's why we did this study using constant $20.22. So the easy thing to do, because we're using constant $20.22, we're not inflating them or anything like that, you can just slide those charts forward three years. It's a really easy kind of situation. So we could take one of those charts, I'll just back it up here. Take this, and 2022 becomes 2024. That's the beauty of using a constant dollar estimate as opposed to a current dollar, which involves inflation and can be affected by timing of the project. So the reports, I think, is, the report is consistent with pushing this project forward, say, two or three years. It's very easy to, and the numbers would not change. I think that's the key to answer to your question.
So you're saying, it's very hypothetical. I'm not saying you didn't use science to come up with this, but these are hypothetical timelines and hypothetical dollars, really. It's, it's.
I would, I would.
As Mr. Fraley said, it's, it's, it's an educated guess.
I would not say that. I, here's, here's what I would say, okay? The, the direct dollar values, all right, that come from the mine, the 400, let's just say the 428 employees. Those are the estimates that are made by Piedmont Lithium based on what they perceive and their business plan and what the size of the mine they think is going to take place. Okay? Once that number is put into the methodology, the rest comes out as pretty much because we have a model of the economy of Gaston County. It's a big, without getting terribly technical, it's a big 360 by 360 input-output model for the county with all the current industries that exist in Gaston County. And it, the spinoff impacts, whether they be indirect impacts for the supplier chain or induced impacts for the entire rest of the county, are based on the linkages that currently exist in the Gaston County economy. So we're not dreaming these numbers up. We're not making these multipliers up. We're not actually using multipliers, per se. We are just generating this big input-output model for the Gaston County, and then just placing this particular industry at this particular size into that matrix and then running that model again. And this, that's where these numbers come from. So on the side of estimates, the direct numbers are estimates based on what Piedmont Lithium expects the mining operation to be. But the spinoff numbers that come after that, I think are a little bit more than an educated guess. I'm pretty comfortable with them.
Mr. Philbin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Most of these facilities and mining operations are around 30, 50 years, if I'm correct. So I think for, for this board, I think we're going to have to answer the question of, okay, one, what is the impact, the economic impact of the mine being here? But we also have to look at, that's 30 and 50 years. And normally, when the mines are closed, there's normally very little economic activity, redevelopment. So what is the economic impact going to be after it closes? I do think, I think we have, I guess this may be more for county manager or county attorney. I think we've, we've looked at hiring folks to look at some of the water issues and doing some studies of that nature. Mr. Chairman, I think it would be extremely important for the county to do its, or maybe even this through EDC, its own economic impact study of, okay, you, you have what the mine will bring, but what is it going to bring after 50 years? We're going to lose development, residential, retail, commercial. And I think if you're going to actually look at it in a fair way, and I think any reasonable way to make a decision, we need to look at the whole picture. Because, I mean, there's no doubt if you spend, I mean, it's a billion-dollar industry. If you bring a mining operation, it's going to create some economic development, that's easy. My question is, what would it look like if we never put the mine there? What would be the economic output over that timeframe? And if the mine isn't there, and then it closes in 20 or 30 years, whatever it is, what is the economic impact? So I think that is something that this board's going to have to look at before we can even make any type of decision. But I do appreciate your time coming and giving us this information. And I have a lot of questions, and I think we all do. I think we'd be here all night trying to get that.
Well, let me, let me make it easy for you. Sorry to interrupt, but let me make it easy for you. If you, any of you have any questions going forward, Piedmont has my contact information. I'll be happy to answer those either through email or phone conversation, or we can do a Zoom meeting at some point in time. Certainly amenable to that, that's not, that's not going to be an issue. So if you think of some things, you want some questions, feel free to get in touch with me, that's fine.
And, and I'm appreciative that, you know, Piedmont will do an economic study. I think any business that comes here, when you look at that magnitude, is going to do an economic impact study and show the community, hey, what it will do. I'm just saying, from our position, the mining is not like a Walmart or, or, or a business of that nature. This will actually have some environmental impacts. And not only that, where you can tear down a Walmart and maybe rebuild, you're not going to necessarily be able to do that with this mine. So there's some long-term impacts that this board has to take into account. And what I would be interested in is seeing the impact study, what would be an impact study if we left it as it is, and an impact study of what we're going to have to deal with afterwards. And I think that would probably give us, our citizens, a better picture to make some type of decision. And that's, that's more towards staff, you know, than you. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I, I think we can find EDC and with the hydrologists and do some things and make a general analysis on things that you're asking for. I think that's not a far-fetched. Any other questions before, Mr. Hovis?
And to go back and answer my question, on your page four, it talks about 22 pounds per battery. It talks about the demand in 2030 to be 3, 34,756 vehicles.
Worldwide, worldwide?
Correct, correct. But nowhere in here have I found the yield from this location. And if the gentleman behind you has that answer, that's fine for him to answer it. I'm just saying, the yield of what percentage we're going to talk about.
Yeah, so again, thank you for letting me, let me answer the question. So the mine, yeah, David Klinezke, Piedmont Lithium. So the mine that, the operation of the lab here will produce 30,000 tons of lithium hydroxide, which will basically provide enough lithium hydroxide for batteries of about 500 and, or sorry, 550,000 cars per year. So the battery average size of about 60 to 55 to 60 kilowatt-hours of energy, of battery capacity. And that 30,000 tons will basically power about 500 to 550,000 cars every year. And, and just, just to note, the numbers that are in there, that's lithium metal. So if you want to convert that to lithium hydroxide total numbers, it's take, take that number times 6.061. Does that answer your question, Mr. Hovis? 550 cars. Okay, no problem.
And, and, and in the U.S., we do, yeah. In the U.S., we do about 15 or 16 million cars and light trucks a year. So that gives you a sense of where that 550, 550,000 fits in.
We're going to ask the elephant in the room question. Out of the study we just got, how much of the economic impact is going to be generated for Gaston County tax revenues?
That was not part of the study.
Please.
We, we can include that, we can do, it's not that hard.
I think that would probably be the forefront of what we're looking for.
Okay.
And I, I say that, I think the other part is what Commissioner Worley had stated, that, or it might have been Commissioner Fraley. When we look at the other side of the program, not just the economic, because obviously, there's going to be issues that arise. And those issues have to be forethought now, not after you're in business, after the first problem, such as with the one lithium company that is in Gaston County now, they had to put a fire department in for a specific place. What, what are we doing for those type of things? I know you guys were in Cherrville last night. I'd like to know what they thought about things. I'd like to know how the, the meetings, because obviously, this impacts everybody in this room, everybody in this region, 4 million people. And I don't know that this study went outside of the water tables for the region. I don't know that this study talks about where we want to be on the board to say, hey, we're trying to find out things because the stakeholders right now is everybody but the Gaston County. Just being very honest with the way that looks. We've, we've, we're trying to find out what impacts are going to happen with that, good and bad. I know that may not be your lane, but somebody's got to be able to put that lane in besides so they can put a thoroughfare going back and forth because that's just the way it goes. Out of the 623 jobs that are going to be existing, how many of those jobs will be able to be used by some other person to do one of those jobs? So a carryover, so we count them as one for the janitor. I'm just using the example, and they may be able to do something different. I mean, so what kind of impact is that for what you've seen?
Well, the way, the way this, let me just slide this back a little, whoops, wrong way. I'll get used to that sooner or later. Let's go back to this chart here. Okay, so the first column over here after the years is the. Okay, so the first column over here after the years is the direct jobs on the site. And there are a wide range of jobs, and I believe in, you guys can provide a list of what those occupations are, because they're, they're detailed in terms of the occupations that exist in those direct jobs. On the indirect and the induced effects, in terms of the jobs, we've broken them out, and in the report, you have tables in the report, I believe, table five, four, five, six, five, seven, show the industries that are most affected by the indirect of the supplier chain and the jobs that are created in those industries as a result of the operation of the mine. And then we also have the induced jobs, which are, again, general jobs throughout the entire county. And we have those industries, a top 15, and what, how many jobs are created in each of those industries?
And I appreciate that, that, I guess my question next is, after we look at that, out of that, I think, I can't remember if I'm writing, 140 quarry employees will make 2 million, about $2.3 million?
Oh, that's in the compensation?
Yeah, that was my- And I, and I think the question looks at, that's only $16,000 per employee, and the following years is a 288% increase. I mean, that is a tremendous, is that for new employees, I would assume, or does that come back from who's already, who's already employed right now?
Okay, behind the scenes, this was done on a monthly basis, okay? So that's, that's probably what you're talking about in the early years. It's not a full year's worth of employment, yeah.
All right. Mr. Worley?
Well, yeah, I think you may have asked that same question, because I was, I was looking on the chart, employment by function in the quarry, 140 jobs in 2023, and then compensation by function, the quarry, that, that number that he spoke of, $2.3 million equals about $16,000 an employee. So, so you're saying that, that's not an entire year?
That's not an entire year, yeah.
That's a ramp up.
So, yeah, ramp up, technical term, over.
Okay.
Yeah, so-
I mean, it just seems confusing, because it wasn't, that wasn't the way it was presented.
Can I, can I just address one, sorry?
Yes, sir. I'm just going to address Commissioner Philbeck's question about, like, after, right, what happens after. And that's one of the things, I know we talked about it in some of our other presentations around reclamation. I know a lot of people have a picture that we're going to leave a big hole in the ground and all those things. That's not, not the case. We're going to progressively reclaim each of the, the mining operations as we go, so we will fill those back up. Our hope is, is that, that this land is used for something else, whether it's industrial, parks, walkways, nature preserves, whatever it may be. That is the plan for us to return this, this land back into that. And that's something we can talk definitely about further, you know, with the county on what our plans are and how we collaborative work together to, to be able to make that happen at the end of the operations. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? My last question is, in 2024 to 2025, it does, it, it cycles over. How much is that monthly, when you go back to that percentage of pay on that? I don't know if you could pull that-
Oh, you mean the 82,000?
Yes.
Yeah, monthly, just, those you divide by 12 for sure, yeah.
Any other questions at this time? Dr. Connaught, thank you for your time, and-
Thank you.
Piedmont, thank you, sir, for your time. Our last presentation this evening will include the FY 2021 Gaston County Audit. Ms. Carrie Dunlap, Martin Starnes and Associates, the floor is yours. And, I saw, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, young lady. Dr. Do, did you have, did you have something to say first?
I sure can. So you're going to receive a report on the annual audit tonight. I provided for you there at your seat, some additional information that's labeled mid-year financial update, that puts some of the additional information in context, especially the, the third page there. But I will turn it over to, to our auditor.
Good evening. My name is Carrie Dunlap, and I'm with Martin Starnes and Associates. And I want to, first of all, say thank you for allowing me to present the financials for fiscal year 21 tonight, and also thank you for allowing us to continue to serve as your auditors. A few audit highlights, there was an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that is the goal. It means there's no reason to think there are any material misstatements in the audit report. Very cooperative staff, we have a lot of requests ongoing throughout the year, and we really appreciate Tiffany, Linda, Randy, and their whole crew getting us things as quickly as we ask for them. And another thing to note is that there were no findings. This is a slide that shows you the general fund and public assistance fund summary, and they are two separate funds, but for presentation purposes, we do combine them. And this shows you your final budget compared to actual. You can see revenues increased, or are above the budget, and expenditures are below, and we will discuss more detail behind the top revenues and expenditures later on. The fund balance, that, the calculation that the LGC uses for your available fund balance is your total fund balance, less your non-spendable amounts, and less your stabilization by state statute. And this calculation is what the LGC uses to compare you to other counties of your size. And the number for Gaston County this year, available fund balance was 83.6 million, and that did increase over last year by 25. almost 8 million. So that was a large increase in your available fund balance. And this slide shows you the comparison of, the pink line is your state average for counties over 100,000 people, which is what Gaston is, and the blue is Gaston County. So as you can see, it's still falling below the state average, but it is trending in line, and it did go up with the state average as well. Other classifications for fund balance are your non-spendable, restricted, committed, and assigned. So there are different levels of how you can classify your fund balance. And so the only number that is truly has no external or internal constraints is your unassigned number. So I'm going to show you the, how that ended this year compared to last year. So your total unassigned fund balance this year was 19.3 million, and last year, you can see it was 6.8. So it was a large increase in your unassigned this year, which was almost 12.6 million increase. And that is a very good increase, because as you can see on this next slide, that unassigned fund balance number as a percent of your total fund balance had gotten very low in 2018, 2019. So that is trending back up to levels prior to recession back in 2017, 2010. And this is another representation of your total fund balance compared to your unassigned. So as you can see, 2021 is the highest fund balance you have had since prior to 2010, and the total unassigned number is gaining as well. The next slides talk about your revenues and expenditures. So this is a pie chart that shows you all of your revenues, and you can see the largest is property tax at 61%, then your restricted intergovernmental and other taxes and license, and those three make up 89% of total revenue for Gaston County. So property tax, you can see how that compares to your final budget as well as over last year. The increase from prior year was 6 million, and then it also exceeded the budget by 8.6 million. The next slide shows your other taxes and licenses, and this did drop slightly along with the budget it was expected to, so it was 29.2 million at the end of '21. And then the restricted intergovernmental, this one is all of your federal and state grants, and the rev, or the budget was a lot higher than where it ended at 2021, but it was also a lot higher than prior year. So coronavirus relief funds, those affected last year and this year, and then the ARPA funds are not included in this revenue number. It was received in your cash, but it's not yet revenue and expenditure this year. So that number, again, will be a lot larger next year. Your top three expenditures are your public safety, human services, and education. And as you can see, that's 79% of total expenditures for the county. And a brief summary of how those compared to last year, public safety had a very small decrease, about 2.7% or almost $2 million over the prior year, and it was also under budget. Human services, it was also under budget, but it, and it decreased a very small amount over the prior year as well, or sorry, it increased over prior year of 457,000, less than 1%. But it was a small increase in human service expenditures. And then the education, it was very in line with budget, very similar to last year, a small decrease of 351,000 this year. This slide shows your enterprise fund of the solid waste, and the revenues were 12.5 million this year, and it increased 422,000 over last year, and the operating income was 3 million, which it increased 2.2 million over last year. So that was a strong increase in your operating income for the solid waste fund. I know that was a lot of numbers, very quick, but I do want to spend a few minutes to tell you about performance indicators. So the LGC, we have a data input worksheet that we have to submit to the LGC, and they use this to compare you to everyone and see how it falls. And so they had certain performance indicators that they were looking at very closely this year. And if anything came out as a red flag, we would be required to present that to the board. Luckily, there were no red flags. You had timely audit submission, stable property tax and valuation collections, and no audit findings. If there had been any audit findings, we would be required to present those in the meeting now. So that is all I had for you, and I know I went very fast through these numbers, so if you have any questions, want to go back to any slides, please let me know.
Mr. Hovis?
Thank you. This isn't directly to you, but it's a result of what you just told us. Our enterprise fund and solid waste, Mr. Maxwell, a large increase in revenue, and my question is, you may not have this number now, but I would like to see a percentage of our existing landfill capacity that we've used year to year to year to year, and I'd like to see what it was for. And I'm assuming these revenue dollars are 2020, 2021, correct?
Yes, and I will say, the revenue only increased 422,000. The operating income number is the one that increased. And the operating income does take into effect, like, the post-closure liability. So that was a large adjustment in fiscal year '20. So maybe that clears some things up.
That helps a little bit, because that number just went, a, a red light went off in my head, because I'm saying, we're going to have to find another landfill. So, and I hope that happens after I'm no longer here, for many reasons. But at the same time, that's something that we, this board, needs to understand, and I'd like to have a, an update on that at your convenience, but that, that number triggered that bullet in my head, because knowing, we were obbed years ago, when I was chairman of solid waste advisory, when I was just a citizen and I had hair, we, we were lobbied to sell our landfill to these waste companies. And some of the people who said on this day, I thought that was the best idea since sliced bread.
And then you had to find another one.
It would have not been, because what it would have done, it was, would have filled up with other products from all over the eastern, this, or the Piedmont of, of North Carolina and South Carolina, and we've protected that resource for reasons, multiple reasons. And Ray and his staff have done an excellent job to harvest energy back off of it and to manage those line sales. Solid waste is, is very, very complicated. And back in the day, when they thought we could just burn it and get rid of it, that didn't work either, because had we done that and built a waste and energy facility, we would have a contaminated cell 50 times as contaminated as the coal ash pits, because that's just coal ash. We would have had everything, batteries, anything anybody threw in the trash, we would have tried to burn it, and it would be horrific. That's one time the state did a great job when they changed state law with flow control that kept us from spending a single penny of that $28 million voters in Gaston County approved at a, at a 70% approval rate. Little piece of history, but thank you.
Good to know. And just to add to that, the LGC, the performance indicator for your solid waste fund would be as if that operating income was a negative number, so no issues there.
You want else? I said, this is not for you, but, and again, it's a non-major fund, but the courthouse parking that we're charging, I thought, Fraley, Commissioner, had we talked about that issue before?
Well, many times.
Yeah, are we still charging that?
We are still charging that. We are not charging for the wounded warrior and some of the other spaces at the front.
Okay.
We can definitely look into-
Well, I, I could have, I'll have to look. My memory was probably not as good as it used to be, but I thought we had made a decision to do something a little different than that. So I, it, it may have been before your time.
I'd be happy to go back and look and see if there's anything on, on record. But if I'm hearing you want us to look into that one again.
If there is, the clerk will be able to find it.
Yeah.
But I would like to have a conversation around that.
Sure.
Just because when I, there's no way you're going to be able to get enough money to do what you wanted to do in there. And when you look at inflation and everything else, there may be a, a better avenue of something we need to look at. Again, it's a very small piece. But as I was talking to a business owner today, I think a lot of times we try to tackle the impossible, and if you can just get those small business, the small things taken care of, sometimes it can lead up to the bigger one. But I am almost certain this board made some type of decision different. So I would like to check that.
If you're, if you're talking about the actual charge, is that what you're talking about, the actual charge? Because I will say this.
And again, this, I know this is an audit, so we can move on and, and approach that later. It's up to you, Mr. Chairman, but that, I just think we need to look at that. I, I seemed like I remember us doing something different. And again, I could be wrong.
Right. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not against-
Yeah, we've moved the money out of it, if I'm-
We talked about it.
Yeah. Anyway, we can talk about that, but that's something I'd like to, it seems as if we had made a decision to do something different with that, and I'm not quite sure what that is. So when I look at this, it just, I want to look at that. Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
All right, thank you. I, I think at one time we did discuss that, and I know we've, we've had ongoing conversations about it. I think that's a place where we can start looking for things. I think some of that was, at the time, may have been to look to give into the, the structure, what we were going to do for COVID or something at that time. We were looking at different methods, because there was no federal money at that time.
Yeah, what I recall, Mr. Chairman, was some questions around what those funds that are currently sitting in that fund can be used for, and I, and I do recall having a conversation around the fact that they are capital funds generated for a specific purpose, therefore they're limited in, in what they can be used for. That's the only thing I can recall from my memory bank, but we'd be happy to go back and look.
I can tell you what it was for, I remember now. We talked about it for the lighthouse. That was what we talked about when we did it, was for the lighthouse.
We were-
For putting the money.
Mr. Chair, if I may answer?
Yes, sir.
During the previous manager's term here, we were in budget time, we were looking for a specific amount of money. That fund was real close to meeting that specific amount of financial need, and we didn't want to put any more in the budget, and we looked at taking it. And in the process of that conversation, the manager at the time found, found the money. It was found resources. And then we did not have to take that kitty out, and we just went on our merry way. But you are 100% correct, Mr. Philbeck. We were headed that way about 90 miles an hour, and the brake, air brakes went on, and we didn't have to do it. And, you know, when you're dealing with the budget, the size of Gaston County's, that amount of money was so infinitesimal, although to me or you, it's a lot of money, but when it, in the scope of things, we've had, we've had positive variances as reported by our audit report. We've got positive variances across the board that more than make up 10 times that amount of money. And that's what ended up occurring when that budget year ended. I remember this 100%.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Dunlap, thank you, and tell your people back at your office that we were very happy with you, and thank you so much. And to our group, thank you so much for the work you put in. It means a lot to us on this board to have a staff that really cares about how we look.
And believe it or not, most of us do look at this, having received it tonight. I can't tell you, I want to go to page 75, line 13, and I want an in-depth dive into that $29 million. I can't do that right now, but we've got the future in front of us.
If you have any questions when you are diving, just let me know. And also, for anyone that's not financially savvy, if you want to at least read the management discussion analysis, that's a great snapshot for where they are this year and what they're expecting next year, so.
Dr. Eagle?
Thank you.
And I would like to publicly thank and recognize Tiffany- And I would like to publicly thank and recognize Tiffany, Linda, and Brandy, our finance staff. They are fantastic at what they do and do the county well. So thank you for all of the work that went into this.
Thank you.
Any other matters that come before this board at this time? And I apologize, Commissioner Johnson. I just looked down and saw that. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay.
I am so sorry. You have any questions for anybody who's still left? Just giving you a hard time, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for at least being on. And I certainly apologize. Any other matters before this board at this time? At this time, I need to, I need to request a closed session for a discuss a personnel matter. Do I hear a motion to go into closed session pursuant 143-31811? Motion made by Dr., Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Warley. All in favor? Is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Did you have a Dr. Hovis here?
You had a Dr. Do I have a motion to come back in from the closed session?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. All in favor? Unanimous, Madam Clerk. There was no action necessary as a result of the closed session at this time. I would now adjourn the work session. This concludes the work session for tonight's special meeting. We'll convene immediately. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please call Donna Buff, 704-866-3196. I will now call to order the January 11th, 2022 special meeting of the Gassen County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for the two items covered in this presentation were earlier, but we'll go through them again. Commissioner Philbeck was looking to accept the Intergovernmental and Interagency Task Force on Homelessness in Gassen County. Written report approved the recommendations and actions to be addressed immediate needs.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Philbeck, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next item, Commissioner Hovis, Finance to amend the Gassen County ARPA Grant Project Ordinance 2021-264 to approve the appropriate funds, project funding for short-term emergency housing of $250,000.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Worley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk.
Can I get back on?
I actually did have a question.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Worley. After, if I go ahead.
Yeah, that's fine. This $250,000, how, when is it going to be available? And what do you foresee as our first action with this money? Where is that going to go, first spend out of this?
This spend would be designed to go immediately to emergency housing for folks who are currently homeless to address the backlog that we have, to put folks in motels that meet the standards that we've established as a part of the research in the program. So that will be the first dollars out the door. We've worked with finance so that this could be available almost immediately relative to the paperwork that needs to occur. So very, very soon, within days.
Second, is there some type voucher that these folks will get? Will we pay directly to the hotel proprietor?
That's an excellent question. We pay directly to the hotel.
And one of the things that was brought up at this meeting is some of the, let's call them what they are, slummy hotels that don't take care of anything. That's not where this money's going. Because a lot of those is, you got a drug infestation problem. Actually, it's worse for them to stay at some of these places. So can you address what we're talking about there?
Yes, yes. So there's inspection standards and criteria that the hotel has to achieve in order to be a candidate to provide the service. We are formulating some plans to reach out to those that Chairman, Commissioner Philbeck just described so that we can work with them to bring their facility up to that standard. If they are interested in doing so, therefore, they can become a candidate for these funds.
So we're not, but I'll let you get your question. So this money, that is, at the end of the day, is taxpayer dollars. It's federal money. It's not county property tax. But it's not just going, here's you a voucher, and it's just some hotel that you wouldn't even want to go stay in yourself. So, but I think that's a big
That's correct.
That's an important point.
Yep, you're correct.
Okay, having said all that, do we have a list of these hotels that are in this program? So, I mean, I'm certain that there's some that have said, no, we don't want to be part of that, so.
We do, and that's administered with assistance from Department of Social Services. So be happy to share any of that that you'd like to say.
Yeah, I'm just trying to
Do you have things that we currently work with in other ways, things, but this is other funding that they don't have available to them? Is that correct?
And if we could get that list, if you want to just, when we get a chance, send it out, I think that'd be good.
Be happy to.
Everybody good on that one?
Hey, we got cold nights coming like now.
Now.
So the sooner you can get those funds out and get people that can, that need a bed or warm place to sleep, the better, the quicker. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. The next item, Commissioner Brown, Finance to accept the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021, Gassen County Audit as Information. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous, Madam Clerk. This concludes our special meeting for tonight. Our regularly, our next regular meeting is January 25th at 6:00 PM here in the Harley B. Gassen Public Forum Courthouse. Thank you for watching. If you have any questions, please submit your comments via telephone to Donna Buff at 866, excuse me, 704-866-3196. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hovis, seconded by Commissioner Fraley. All in favor? Good night, Snappleberry.